I make a motion, we approve.
Passo.
Yes.
Dees.
Yes.
Adamas.
Yes.
Yeager.
Nelson.
Yes.
Ricardo.
Yes.
Special guest Gerald. Gerald? I'm gonna guess I'm here to try to get the water situation settled on Cedar Street. A six-foot tile under the street, across the road, green ditch, or green mild water into that deeper ditch. Well, since some dirt has been dumped into the ditch, which is on city property, I'd like to get the matter resolved. Well, I've talked to Tommy on there.
We'll be there nine-thirty, ten o'clock maybe, at the latest tomorrow morning, it'll be done.
That good. Okay, Clint wants his business idea, and that doesn't pertain to us. They had a meeting at the firehouse and discussed that issue, it doesn't have anything to do with us. Old business, we need to where's somebody in?
Can't see, can't hear.
Okay, we're ready.
I'm ready.
I should pass them, I solemnly swear that I will upfully support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge duties of the office of trustee according to my best ability.
I assume everybody's read over the ordinance on nepotism, so we need approval.
I have a question concerning it. In part where it says, character act one, and whereas that down to the third fourth line, and it says the jurisdiction of the village indicated for prohibit nepotism in hiring and employment practices. Should that also include appointments? Down in item number one, for purpose of ill-advised nepotism, shall we define as the act granting employment promotions in contracts? And I think it should also say appointment.
We can have that interesting, that's not, I mean, obviously not a big deal. We can still approve it with that modification if you want.
I'd like to make that.
I mean, yeah, appointment, employment, that's probably a decent distinction in case somebody doesn't wanna cry foul.
I'm making a motion that the modification that we accept this ordinance.
I second.
Ricardo.
Yes.
Yeager. Nelson.
Yes.
Adamas.
Yes.
Dees.
Yes.
Passo.
Yes.
Has everybody got a copy of what those new ordinance charged for me?
The zoning grants, he gave it to you all last meeting.
Mary, what was, was that on zoning?
Zoning grants.
Jamie's not the same.
Oh, yeah, you might have a copy of it.
Power shut off. There's no power out there. We shut it off.
What did you do that?
Monthly, yeah. It got shut off. Like, we got tired of paying it, no one wanna take care of it, it got shut off. So, I don't know if you guys got free stuff out there, but.
Well, so it's off, you can't, so it's shut off, but.
Yep, yep, okay.
He told they were shut off.
And she has.
She's supposed to, yeah, Mike, come on. I can give you the data, I only wanted to know.
Is there any chance, any chance we can get another copy of that from him?
Sure.
And give, listen to me. Give it to me, bring it to me. So, just make sure Kim gets it, please.
Ask Ryan, he knows about it.
I have a copy. I'm right. They have it here.
They're dropped off April fourteenth.
Where they have to drop off?
No.
Well, it's not, no, as you were saying, I'll have to wait till we come to talk about it. Sorry.
Is it on this agenda or no? I'll wait.
We're building the escrow vehicles up here unless somebody wants the zoning officer, otherwise I'll check around, check what we can do here. We just eliminate them, and that's all we do. And the fees are gonna change, like, for a deck condition for a porch, ten dollars. Operation, commercial and industrial, industrial, or residential's fifty dollars. Same for residential structures. New commercial and industrial will be a hundred dollars. New residential permit, fifty dollars. I make a motion.
Nelson.
Yes.
Yeager.
Yeah.
Passo.
Yes.
Ricardo.
Yes.
Adamas.
Yes.
Dees.
Yes.
Okay, new business cleanup day, been asked by several people. And we gotta talk it over and see what you guys think, how about September, after September comes out? All the week or whatever, where it works, and you guys.
With that too, I got something from Christian County Self Waste Management. It's a new thing that they have, a community cleanup grant program. And if I apply, we are eligible for up to a thousand dollars for subcontractor expenses for that.
Thanks. Are we gonna do the, are we gonna do the three, I was gonna say, we're gonna do same thing that we did before, like we did what?
Well, that's up to you guys.
Did we do it last year or year before?
Last, last year.
I think what we did then, and it worked out well, I think that we planned to have three dumpsters, and we had them only during certain periods of time. We accepted donations, which did well, donations only. And, yeah, I mean, oh, what, what date are we talking about after the, so that's the, so you wanna maybe do it on the September sixth?
They're doing second weekend, because first weekend is.
Labor Day, well, the Monday is right, the first.
Second, and the third, third week.
Oh, third, the twentieth, Saturday the twentieth?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I said, Saturday, Monday, eight to noon.
Okay, so, well, we want to see a motion for that date and that time? Or you wanna discuss it, or you wanna wait till committee to discuss it, or?
Yeah, you can discuss, whoever, what kind of time, as long as we get her to like.
Okay, okay, got you.
Can't bring a lawn care, and no, we're gonna do, you got anything on that?
On the campground, I think that was killed.
Well, we, just, and I think with the board and all the village, everybody needs to kinda be aware of, of what we're doing right now. Apparently, we entered into an agreement, I don't, not know if it's a signed agreement, it might be just be a verbal with Kent, who's here, who's here tonight. Kent, obviously, I saw him earlier. Boom, there he is, yeah. To, to, but, do me a favor, Kent, tell me, since we are giving you, is it one? One lot in lieu of this?
Yeah.
What exactly are you mowing for us out there, so that the rest of the people in the village know what we're doing? We're trading one month of the three that he pays for right now, for the lawn, yeah.
Well, you know, whatever needs mowing, everything except the damn thing.
Except the damn area.
I don't want a damn thing, I'm too old for that.
Okay.
You know, that's kind of a spooky deal.
Are you good with that? Okay.
You're talking about that whole open area behind us, the building in the way?
Sure.
That's not a lot, you're no more than your damn.
Well, now, here's the part of this too, I'm gonna be using your equipment. That's the deal. I mean, the, our predecessor here, we kinda made a deal, I'd help you mow out here constantly, if they could provide a mower.
Kent, who's that deal, who's that deal with?
Well, we made it with Mark, was who talked about it, with Mark. But, now, let me tell you, I don't wanna do that, that's fine, I'm good.
No, we've already, we've already entered into that agreement, so we wanna maintain that, all we wanna do is clarity, that's all we want, is clarity.
Well, I think we have to identify the liability aspect and more get him on the policy if he is wanting to turn.
He was giving the lot for being can't-riders, not for.
Right, not for, not for his mowing.
Yes, for being can't-riders, just like they do out of Commonwealth, anywhere else.
And you're all right with that understanding?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I, I just, oh.
The truth is, he came, he came back and mowed for all those lots.
Yes, I know.
And he held his check.
I know.
I, I often do the mowing to help.
Understand it.
Park to succeed, and I don't have any of these guys to mow for, you know? And I just, well, I can help you mow out here, because I'm here almost every single day, you know? I'd be willing to, to help you with it.
I understand, I know you're.
There was never any agreement for lots about mowing, that was just me saying.
The liability out, we need to protect ourselves, we need to have something in writing, we need to have something in writing, that's what we need to have.
We'd have to put another machine out there.
I'm fine with the agreement.
I know how long that will last. Somebody have it.
What's that? Oh, well, yeah, I mean, if you guys don't think it's a good deal, I'm good with it.
Thank you.
You know, I mean, I'll just keep doing what I'm doing, and then, and I'll find some other way to help the park.
We're doing good.
You know? Thank you.
Thanks, Kent.
Yeah.
On the mowing contract for the village, I don't know if it's gonna be too late this year to look at it, but I sat down and did numbers, and it's crazy. And it's not, not on CJ or anybody, but I would like to see it get put out on an informal bid, and Tommy can, and CJ will tell the different parties or different areas. But right now, roughly, when all three of them cut grass for sixty-eight hours, we pay almost six hundred dollars a day to cut grass. So, four times a week's twenty-four hundred, we're talking ten thousand dollars a month for these guys to cut grass. I think we could find somebody to cut the park, the railroad, and lumberyard possibly cheaper. But, yeah, if you break it down, and they do it over a six-month period from March till October, you're talking sixty thousand dollars to cut grass.
Paying our staff?
Yes. I mean, 'cause they can't keep up, I mean, we looked, I told them, if we looked at, maybe they cut grass four hours a day, and then work on sewers and stuff that we need done, four hours a day, but.
Where are you talking about the lumberyard, where's it at?
Lumberyard, yeah, you said lumberyard. Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, I meant railroad and the, uh, Warren Tower and the park, or in the solar farm and that. I mean, he's got a list, Tommy's got a list, he can talk about how much they cut a day, or what they cut a week.
Well, I see, different, you said you said lumberyard.
I'm sorry.
Lumberyard's a bullpen, not a hen king.
That I did not mean to say, sorry about that.
Did you ever figure out, Tommy, how many hours you actually can mow between the three of you?
No, but I can try that. Usually, we can get it done in two to two and a half days, depending on the weather and how many of us are mowing.
That's working all day at it?
All day, yeah. When I started mowing, I mowed all the way home on myself. And those times, by myself, I might have identified early, some days per week it took me all week, but I hustled. We had a seventy-two-inch X-Mark bin, and. I hustled. But, I don't know, everybody's got a list, does a list of.
Twenty-two on your list.
Twenty-two different things to mow, that might not even be all. I'm not sure if I got them all, but CJ and I was trying to think of everything to mow. And sometimes we know people's lots that move out, and we'll be sent over to mow and knock them down, just.
So, Tommy, I, I have a question for you. If there's excluding the lake, okay, 'cause the lake's an entity all by itself. If you look at that, there's like twenty-one pieces of property on here. And if it takes you two and a half days, if it takes all of you, I mean, if, you know, that's, that's a lot of time that you could be devoting to other things. What would you, what's your opinion, and I like to be an honest one, about, what do you think if, we have a lot of people in town who cut grass for a living in the summer? What if we broke these up into certain areas or whatever, and had people who were interested give us a bid on the lot?
I'm fine with that, I'm mowing, come on sixteen years old.
You're fine with mowing, or you're?
No, I'm fine with somebody else mowing, just for a while.
They have to check the liability on their part.
Yeah, I mean, they have to use their own equipment.
And there's a lot of hills, I mean, uh.
That would also cover some of the thing, if, if we extended, if we talked to our insurance company and about the possible liability of saying, hey, we're gonna, and really, what we'd be doing is subcontracting with people in town who have a mowing business, and maybe that way we could also talk with them about the possibility of, of an exchange of service versus cost of a lot, and Kent would use part of the mower out of the, out of the lake. I don't know, what's worth it, talk to, you know, to the insurance company?
Yeah.
It would certainly save our guys from getting high enough.
They'll have insurance on their own accord as well, too.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I'm with Louis, I think it would be hard pressed to find somebody that would be reputable, but what I think, maybe something that we would look into is if we could post something and, and hire for the month of possibly July and August,
Well.
and not, and not lose the whole entire summer, and then get an idea if there's anybody that's available to do it, if we can have a better.
I think what we could do is put it out on the website, and also post it in the post office. Any, any local contractor who has a cutting operation is welcome to come in and apply.
Insured.
Insured.
Yes, please.
I mean, worth it, try.
Post office on here, Paul already knows.
Exactly.
I know, he's been spraying all the sidewalks and everything, because that's not been getting done, so he's doing that all on his own for the post office.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Yeah, he does like two strips of the post office, they do the rest, 'cause I called him one day, I said, well, you cut that, 'cause that's, you know, that's my part, they do the rest.
And the sol, solar panels are the one down by the water treatment?
Yeah.
Okay, that might be something we wouldn't wanna put on somebody else to do.
Yeah, it's rough, I mean, they, uh, couple goats. Hey, I see them all, I see it all the time, they put goats, and they put two goats and have one goat. They'll clear it out.
I have a couple goats that could be borrowed by someone.
Let's trade it in, let's trade it in, let's trade it in.
One thing to do is just break it down, however you wanna break it down, get it posted, put it on the internet, you put it on our Facebook page.
I mean, if we break it down, if he does two and a half to three days, you're still talking almost seven thousand dollars a month to cut grass.
Well, they'd have to get, they'd select, if we break it, if we had, say, five people who were interested, then we would break it down, so everybody gets a piece of pie, and then they would have to give us their bid for doing that particular lot or that particular section.
That'd go by the hour, like thirty dollars an hour, that'd say less than forty-five dollars an hour, you know?
But I'm just saying, I think it's worth taking some people we've got here in town that have a mowing business, and let's put them to work.
'Cause I was with them one day, and I'm like, holy shit, you guys don't, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's a better way to conserve who we've got working on the city, we've got better things to do.
Okay, so we're gonna make a list out, are we, we're gonna make a list out, get it posted there?
Do we need to make a motion on that, somebody, or we're just posting it?
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Okay.
Okay, we're, Clark, playing the idea of hiring a part-time help in the office. The hours would be four hours a day, three days a week, like Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And that's kinda twofold, that would put us with a second person who knows how to do things, in case she's off on vacation, or her, or sick, or whatever. This way it is right now, we gotta go pay for a backup, other than Beverly.
What do you think money wa? The way you talk the money was?
Money wise? Say something outstanding, not always average, I mean, minimum fifteen, so we gotta be there about.
Are we needing them from now on, would this be something forever, or? Yes?
I mean, it would be nice.
Yes?
Hey, I'll, I'll tell you what, all of them, I've been here.
Should that?
She's got her hands, well, Louis seen it.
Yeah.
I, I don't want it, and she says she needs help, we need to help her, we need, that's our job, we need to support her, so, we need to support her. Yes? So, you got somebody in mind?
No.
Are we gonna appoint, or are we gonna hire? Okay.
Tony, we talked to the finance committee that we thought we'd start at sixteen fifty, and that would, and that's.
That's fine.
And then get them all ready, and then go from there.
That's fine.
And we said twelve hours a week?
Less than nineteen.
Is there a speculation that it has to go out for, for bid, or?
Any jobs actually go out.
I don't know if it does, if it's an appointed position.
He's not appointed.
Well, I, I think you, oh, you wanna do it that way, or no?
Hire.
If you're doing secretary, why would you not do an appointed position, part-time for this? He plays the secretary.
No, does not afford the secretary.
Okay.
He's hired.
Okay.
So, do we, do we have to post it? Yes.
Treat it like we did this. I was hoping if I could do any other employment position.
Okay, you want a motion that we do this?
Yes.
I make a motion, we hire some part-time help in the office for three days a week, twelve hour, uh, three days a week, twelve hours a week.
Not exceed.
At sixteen dollars an hour.
Sixteen fifty, not exceed nineteen hours. That's second.
Can I ask what your hours are gonna be with the?
AM is usually norm, done by noon, I would imagine.
What's gonna be your start date, your end date to post that, send me?
What's that?
How many days should I run this for? Like, two weeks?
Would you run for?
No, you gotta do at least thirty. You have to do at least thirty.
We don't have, we don't have.
No, I'd rather to be on the.
Can you, is it, you have to, don't you have to post it some certain amount of time?
You gotta, you gotta post it up here.
Post it up here, isn't there, is it at least two weeks?
Yeah, I would.
There you go.
And I don't even post it long as one, or until you get some.
I was thinking you had to post up.
Jamie, you just asked the question, what hours would you go look at?
Like, if you do a contract.
Yeah.
Probably nine to one.
There you go, Jamie.
What we do, we're, but that's gonna be more than two weeks.
Are we talking morning hours, eight to noon, is that what we're talking about?
Say like nine to one, the only reason I say that is because somebody's here while I'm on lunch.
So they can work for your lunch hour.
Every day to go to the post office and the bank, and I have it up there, so.
Okay.
Nine, yeah.
So, nine to one?
Yeah, we just, we just, we can, we can. Okay, you got some of them.
Had a person's like.
Yeah, we didn't go around, yeah, we need that.
It's okay, Adamas.
Yes.
Passo.
Yes.
Yeager.
Yes.
Ricardo.
Yes.
Dees.
Yes.
Nelson.
Okay, selling off the, um.
Tommy, this one, uh. Are you gonna do yard violations? I didn't know if that.
Yeah, I'm going to. Yard, building violations, I don't know, that's all you hear on the internet, why we don't do, why we don't do, well, we are trying. I confronted two people, I got cussed out by both of them, and one told me to just, well, I don't tell you what to do. And I have no backbone to fall back against, no cops to call, so what am I expecting to do? I have to do, I have a list, I give a list to, what, fifteen or twenty to mail out, whatever it is. No way to enforce it other than that.
I, I put that on there because we're charging two hundred and fifty dollars per yard of violations, and in my head, I'm thinking, for people that are hurting for money, 'cause they can't cut their grass, should we lower it to seventy-five dollars an hour, 'cause that's the actual labor costs that our three guys at law can cut it at? The second time offense, we double it to a hundred fifty, and then so on. And I kinda think that on the water bills, the ordinance is that we wipe them out real quick. I mean, there's a lot of people get down on hard luck once in a while, I sure take half. We should, I think in my opinion, give them a couple, sixty days to try and catch up with a payment plan, Jamie knows one payment plan's missing, and then all of a sudden, then, then we do it. Because, like Sue brought up, the one time, long time ago, everybody donate extra on their bills to help pay it, nobody's stopping that, so I'm thinking, instead of, if you're already broke, and you can't afford your water bill, now we're gonna charge you a second month's water bill, and a turn-off fee, whatever, you know, what we gonna do? I mean, we, I, I guess in the bleeding heart, I think we should give people chances.
Make a motion?
Make a motion.
What's your motive? Just say it's out of motion.
My motion will be to charge seventy-five dollars for the first time for cutting of grass, second offense, a hundred fifty dollars, third offense, just keeps going up. And then in the ordinance, it says that we can put liens against people's house, there's no offense to Jared, we paid him a lot of money to get us back two hundred fifty dollars, and he doesn't pay the charge.
On an ordinance violation, correct.
And, and the water bill, I also include that in there, because, like I said, I struggled before in the Navy, and I got no help, and when you're, when you're down, why, why are we kicking people? She gets a, if I'm not mistaken, Jamie gets a, a list of people that's behind or blinker, correct?
I just shut off the list.
Yes.
Nine times out of ten, though, so when I get the list of the last Tuesday in the month, there's like sixty people on there. But I would take a whole day, and I would call these people, and about fifty-five will pay that day, and there's only a few that can't pay, or make a promise to pay, or are on a payment arrangement, so. I don't like shutting people off if I don't have to.
So, the water, the water park, is that something you think we need to not talk about, because you?
It's by the way it is.
Okay.
It's not worth it.
Then we'll ignore that one, we'll just go with the seventy-five, a hundred fifty, and so on, on the cutting of grass.
Well, you know, it seems to me that people who fall upon hard times, you can't cut their grass, it happens once, it happens twice, it happens four or five times. And a lot of times, it's because they just don't care, 'cause somebody's gonna come along and do it for them. I mean, I could see sending, you know, whatever the charge would be, to come and cut it once, but if they do it again, they're not, if they don't pay you the seventy-five, they're not gonna pay you the two fifty.
Okay, no, I said a hundred fifty, but if you want a minute.
You know, I, I don't wanna raise it anymore, but, but I guess maybe, you know, I guess if we really wanna help people, sometimes it's a matter of organizing community. community teams to go over, if you got somebody who's old, somebody who has, uh, health problems, or any kind of problems, they can't cut their grass, then maybe we should organize something like, you know, the village care club, where we all take turns, go over and do something, run a weed eater, or run a lawnmower. You know, it's kinda like neighbor helping neighbor.
Right.
I, I think if they're, if, if we charge them seventy-five the first time, there will always be another seventy-five, they didn't have the first seventy-five, or they probably mightn't have the second one. They just gotta go.
I think it's more of the people that own property here, and don't live here, and they're not cutting their grass, they don't know how much they need to go after, yeah, somebody needs help. I agree, they just need to call up here, and we can figure something out.
See, that's, that's the thing, it's, it's not, to me, it's never really about whether it's two hundred and fifty bucks or seventy, I'd rather not collect any money from them whatsoever, I'd rather them be compliant. That, that, that's, and, if they, if they need help, we've been in the past, we, we will, they came up here, we worked with them, that, that's not, that's not an issue, that, I just really feel like, it's not about the violation, if you wanna change them seventy-five dollars, I'm fine with that, I'm fine with it at two fifty, because they're gonna come up here and negotiate us all down, and we've waged that feat before, you know what I'm saying? So, it's more about, it's more about, we would like the community to come together and be compliant, we don't want the money.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's a matter of everybody taking care of their property, and having the place look, look nice.
Cause most of the ones that I wrote ordinance on have been empty houses, and it's like the one across the street from, on, um.
Cedar.
Cedar Street, the lady was from Chad, the guy bumped out on her for three months and never knew, get, she didn't get rent, didn't get nothing, and then the weeds are up to your waist, and she had to pay some, and she did it instantly, that's what I'm talking about, I mean, that's, but like.
Yeah, I don't mind going after absentee landlords, or, or, or people who just vacated their property, cause then we get into that mess, like we've got next to the, to the Methodist Church.
Yeah.
You know?
I just think that we do go after somebody at two hundred and some dollars, like, wow, you know?
I mean, if it's somebody who's older, or doesn't own a lawnmower, or whatever, then, yeah, I think we should do things to help in good faith, to keep the community looking like a decent community.
Totally agree with that, but I don't wanna be taken advantage of either.
No.
I know that, in the past, the township used to give out money, and I watch the people get the money for rent and water bills, and go straight over there and buy a six-pack of beer, and cigarettes, and steak, and I'm like, wow. So that's, that's why I think seventy-five would be an easy feat for them, to prove a point, hey, you know, gotta take care of yourself, but, that's up to you guys.
Or we could give them the name of the contractor here in town, and they can hire
Some of them's gonna be going to another, but, hey, I just put it out there, you know, if I want to do the motion, I'm fine with that.
I'm for that.
Maybe there's something, maybe we can put this on a committee and have, and have more.
I'm doing.
And have more discussion, because I think, everybody brings up this, everybody's got about a point, let's just move it to the committee, so we can have a good discussion about it, make a smart decision.
That's fine.
Can we make a motion to table that?
Yes, you can.
I make a motion, we table it to the committee meeting, we can have more discussion, and come up with a better solution, that we can all live with.
I'll second.
That's, I have a motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Passo?
Yes.
Dees?
Yes.
Adam Myers?
Yes.
Jaeger? Nelson?
Yes.
Ricardo?
Yes.
Now, go on, someone, the equipment, you got this one?
Yes. We have, um, six things. Eighty-three Duntuck, oh, blue, it's been here since, I think that, this building was built, came out in eighty-something.
What's it worth?
I have no idea. It's got a new steering box on it, that's like the first one that's on it, it, uh, reeks when you drive it, because, uh, fumes get in there, and nobody wants to crack it. And we really don't need it, cause we got all different trucks for Pete, and got it for Pete, so, we can get rid of that if you guys want to, send it up a bit. We have the old street sweeper, cause we have a new one, that works great, thank you so much for that. Uh, it's eighty-five street sweeper, came out by air crash, carrier ship, it was used to sweep up rubber, and they got the surplus, I'm not sure what they paid for it when they got the surplus, but, they probably didn't get much, so.
Surplus usually free.
It's probably worth more than scrap than somebody would give for it, it's, it's heavy.
Will it drive to the molins?
No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, no.
Dollar store, that'll beat her, cause they're out behind Commonwealth, they'll strip up rock for the township.
But it still works.
No, that's.
Actually, you were a good idea.
That, that sweeper, I do want you to take it to molins and find out why it's worth for scrap, that's, no, no kidding, that's a big part of the noise.
My best person. We had a whole.
But you gotta make sure the water's out of there.
Yeah.
I don't think it holds water, it works in tanks, but still. Don't tell that to someone, I don't wanna do it. We have a four-inch trash pump, I've never known it to work, it's down in the surplus plant and shed, and a six-inch trash pump, I don't think it works, one, one time we worked on, got it running, but it's been, you know, probably eight years ago, so, and, the Massey Ferguson sidearm, we can't hardly get parts for it anymore, cause Massey Ferguson's out of business, last time Mark found parts in like three of our states, and had it shipped here.
And it only cuts?
It only cuts about two foot outside of tractor, it's like four foot long, but two foot's behind the tractor, it's nearly cut a two-foot swath, and trying to get in ditches, we've been able to use something longer, or, or thinner, not so heavy, and a pipe bed with guys, that came from the surplus, and it's been sitting there for fifteen years, and we've never even opened the box, so, it's a hand one, so if I, if I, it might work more scrap, somebody's gonna pay for it, so, that is stuff that, if you wanna put it up a bit, and get rid of it.
And what is that, what is what you're not popping up in the trash? And we're gonna put it up a bit, and we're gonna hang on to it.
Well, in my opinion, by keeping it, we're gonna pay them guys to maintain it, what we mean, Alex.
We're never gonna get out of what we got in, but we need to get something out of there.
We could try and sell it to the guy next door, who has all the equipment that's from the river.
There are a lot of need for down there.
Yeah.
That place needs cleaned up fast.
That's gotta go out if we did, there were plenty, that, a piece of progress. Oh.
All this equipment, we're talking about, the Tommy wants, half of it doesn't work, do we wanna just try and do all molins, just take call of the day? Cause if it came from surplus, surplus is usually a free charge to us, we don't pay for it.
The Blue Duck still runs, I mean, uh, Ferguson, back when we hauled dirt, um, five years ago, when we were just helping Manburg clean up their mess, we hauled dirt out, Ferguson's out there, and he said he loved that truck, so, if he was to put it up a bid, he would probably have been on a hotel first somewhere out here.
Well, I mean, that's probably the only thing, right?
Yeah.
Uh, Jay was also, I think. Yeah, Jay's was in there for one time, yeah.
A truck in this, pretty, this street sweeper, I could see putting out a bid, but the rest of it, we should still get, it does improve. Take it over to one.
Maybe instead of just put a reserve on that, and surplus the other, that's what I would do, that's my suggestion, put a reserve on it, bid it, and then surplus the rest of it, that would be fine. He's wanting to sell it, we don't need it, half of it doesn't work.
Yeah, no, we could use a raw space.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that, and then we'll buy it.
So what, do we need a motion to agree to sell the equipment?
Yeah.
Yeah. Or do we need to break it down like we're gonna do a reserve, like we talked about, or just, we're gonna sell it, and we'll work all the details, we're gonna do it by bid, like sealed bids, or?
Well, we could put it as sealed bids, cause we don't have to accept sealed bid anywhere, if it doesn't get over one.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we sell the equipment, that we just, I make a motion that we sell the equipment.
Ricardo?
Yes.
Jaeger? Yes. Nelson?
Yes.
Adam Myers?
Yes.
Dees?
Yes.
Passo?
Yes.
And then that other stuff, just, all the molins. Okay, water operator pay. Jamie, you know more about that?
CJ, why don't you explain? I'm assuming, is this because now that you're union?
I'm in the union, so now it's attached to the labor pay, so, water operator pay.
When we did this before, we just incorporated the water operator paying it to his hourly wage, but now that he's union, we need to go back and approve or agree to pay him the five hundred a month water operator pay, separate from his hourly.
And we're, well, that's what we're currently doing now, we agreed, since he's in the union, that's what we're gonna do?
Well, that's what I need.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so you need a motion to?
Yes.
I make the motion that we take care of the water operator pay.
How much is it?
Yeah.
Five hundred.
Five hundred a month, union. Fee.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Dees?
Yes.
Adam Myers?
No.
Ricardo?
Yes.
Passo?
Yes.
Jaeger? Yes. Nelson?
Yes.
Okay, still right now, you getting a estimate on that?
They haven't given us a written one, but, they said if they didn't have to tear out concrete, it was gonna be, gonna be five hundred, or thirty-five, forty? If they got to tear the concrete out, it was gonna be maybe forty-seven hundred, forty, forty, forty-five, four thousand, four hundred. They haven't written anything written, but he's been having a hard time with Bullbit over there, and that, him and that guy get along, so I think, it's kinda been forgotten, but, unless he's in war, Jamie, call him, and see if he can get us up written.
So, low price of what?
Thirty-five, and if they got to tear concrete out, it'd be up to forty-five hundred.
Well, if we prove up to forty-five hundred, we're gonna be covered, which should be?
Should be, that's what they bloody told me, so, those have to.
Cause we need to get that fixed pretty quick.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, well, what it does, it helps recirculate sort of water, when the flow's not real great, but we've had plenty of flow, the back ponds, like, over the rock, I've never seen it that high, and we got the valve open, going to the river, and, it'll go down eventually, it just takes a long time.
I think we probably oughta make the motion to go ahead, approve the higher dollar amount, you know, if we need it or not.
And we wanna max it out, though, is he saying it's forty, maximum out, forty-seven hundred to thirty?
Forty-five, if they had to tear concrete, it's in a concrete thing about this big, about five foot down.
They won't know, like, you know, I've seen it, I can get that.
What kind of timeline are we talking about?
If we make, if we make a motion, that includes thirty-five to five thousand, because something always happens.
Of course it does, that's why I asked.
I don't know where, I've never seen that guy, I don't know if he's gonna get it now, or if he's gonna.
I don't know if I'm getting that one.
Yeah, the guy, he, on his feet, hanging.
You could have like a central grandkid getting it.
And work with your hands, and your head down, and that's, it's only like this big, but it's big.
CJ's skinny.
For those, what he's talking about, down in the water, where the, I call it the mer go around, it spreads water, that is not, it does not move right now without that valve. It's not.
So it's unnecessary.
Holy shit.
It's moving now.
But you have, but it is moving.
As long as it doesn't exceed five grand, I'm gonna second the motion.
Dees?
Yeah.
Ricardo?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Passo?
Yes.
Adam Myers?
Yes.
Okay. We hear a lot of complaints about animals, and triggers everywhere, so, I'm going to appoint Claire to be our animal control person. And I talked to her, I told her a lot, we were so well, you're paid. And I'm telling them, if I'm what I guess, all, all animals, she takes out dogs and cats, she's gonna check them, if they're first off, she's gonna test them here, and if they need to be put down, then we put down that she's licensed with it. If we hold dogs, at this point, we can't take a dog to the county, but, the rate right now is, we can, we can rent what they call a cage for a hundred dollars a month, and be specifically for any animal we bring in from here, we're not doing that right now. And the lady told me, don't order a hundred dollars, cause they're having a meeting too, and it's on the road.
Yeah.
She's planning on looking, finding farmers to take the cats, you know, the ones that are usable, most of them, if they have that, whatever disease it is.
Kalisi virus, and F I G, a lot of cats here in Kinkade have both of those.
She'll put them down immediately. And the cat will hold the dog for ten days, and if the owner wants the dog back, it's gonna cost you a hundred and sixty dollars to get, it'll cost us anything. And she also wants to be able to write tickets, and ordinance violations pertaining to the animals, and, uh, she's gonna, I give you this to stuff she needs for startup. Get going, she's not really asking a wage, specifically, to speak of, and what she does get, she's willing to, uh, third year fund, fully pressed, you're right?
Yes, well, to help span your, all the cats that are in the area.
So it's all in, all in the pocket, and what'd you tell the cost, did you remember that?
Um, fifteen dollars.
Fifteen dollars?
Yeah, that's my cost.
And the debt's charged.
I, I am one hundred percent.
Sixty, up to sixty-five dollars.
Not that.
I also talked to her, I kinda held it out there, and she jumped on it, so I actually said yes. She's willing to be ordinance, violated, violation.
Code enforcement?
Enforcement.
Please. I wanted to do this five months ago.
Until we have full-time police officers.
Yeah.
And once we have full-time police officers, that part of our ordinance violations will be done, but she's still handling dogs and cats, and, you know, all of that. What'd I miss? What'd I miss?
Um, I think you covered it all, one thing that's on the list is, uh, bite gloves, and I found mine, so we can scratch that. Those are important when you handle cats.
Okay, I, I missed it, or didn't hear it, were you, like, you have an animal, where are you putting it?
So, I'm in talks with Christian County Animal Control.
Okay.
And what we're going to do is, we're going to set up a panel there, and that'll only be for us.
Okay.
So if I pick up a dog, then it goes there, if I have to hold it overnight, I have a space for, to hold it overnight, but then, the next morning, it goes there, but she's going to get me a key anyway to the gate, so I can get in anytime, to bring a dog there.